I'd like to call to order the November 12, 2024 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Michelle, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Granland.
Here.
Petway, here. Palmer.
Here.
Maderas.
Here.
Hool. Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll begin with our agenda approval adjustments and announcements, starting with the approval of the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? For your non will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Next, we have our announcements. On November 19th at 5:30 PM is the school board work session in the community room. November 26, 6:00 PM is the regular school board meeting in the community room. November 27, 28, and 29, there is no school, and on November 28 and 29, the district is closed. Next, we have our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda includes the insurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination that was presented on October 22, 2024, lane change that was revised in 11/12/2024, the personnel report from 11/12/2024, the school board minutes from the October 8 meeting, the October 15 work session, and the October 22 meeting, and the treasury report for the month of September. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Michelle, in a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Next, we have our acknowledgement of contributions. As this is a resolution, I will read this for us. Alright, the acknowledgement of contributions resolution. Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. On that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 resolves to accept with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background below. The detailed background includes monetary donations. The Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters donated $2,000 to track and field, $2,500 to boys' basketball, $300 to Columbia Heights High School, and $1,500 to Valley View. The Columbia Heights High School Class of 1984 donated $750 to Columbia Heights High School for non-instructional support. Donations in kind. Jane, I apologize, I will mispronounce your last name. Wenzinski donated two backpacks with school supplies valued at $80 to the district office. Halima Ahmed donated a standard valued at $5,000 to Columbia Heights Public Schools. Columbia Heights Lions Club donated feminine and personal hygiene products donated at $500 to Columbia Heights High School. Pilgrim Dry Cleaners Laura Dizon donated approximately 340 coats, hats, mittens, and winter things valued at $7,000 to Columbia Heights Public Schools. And plastic book bins valued at $235.87 were donated to a Valley View classroom. Total fiscal 2024-2025 monetary contributions to date, $33,180. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
Just a brief comment. As always, the generosity of our community and supplying, you know, some additional needs to our students is so appreciated. And I actually believe, I actually did see all those hats, coats, and mittens today, and the kids were like really excited to take a look and try things on. So they are very much appreciated. I saw a lot of happy faces. So, thank you.
Excellent. Agreed. Thank you, Laura. Any other discussion? Alright, since this is a resolution, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yep. Granland?
Aye.
Hool? Maderas?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items. We will start with reports from members of the board. We will start with Mary.
Okay, I think since the last time we met, we, did we meet right after the truck or treat? I don't think we've met since then. Have we?
No.
No. Yep, so I attended Truck or Treat, which was fantastic. So many people came to play games with us and to sort of see everybody at the different community booths that were there. It was really fantastic. And to see everybody in costumes, so creative. Then we also, I attended Robotics Meet Zero, which was the first time that we held it. I had a number of staff, or I'm sorry, I had a number of families say to me that they really enjoyed it and really liked the space and the presentation, so I think that that bodes well for the other upcoming meets that we have hosted at CA. Last Friday, I attended the School Law Conference in person with members Hool, Palmer, and Petway and Superintendent Stenbik. And I know that member Maderas was also there on Zoom, which was great. And plenty of phone calls with people, members, Maderas, Petway, Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenbik, and a lot of community conversation. So I think that is, oh, did I say the chair, and the chair meeting right before this one as long with the Subcommittee on Community Engagement? So I'm sure I left something out, but there we go.
Excellent. Thank you. Michelle?
Yep. So, seems like so far ago, but I attended North Park's multilingual night at Columbia Heights Public Library, which is great to see all the families come together, learn the tools that the library has to offer, and just see everybody's participation. It was packed. There was no parking. There was a lot of families there, so that was fun. I also attended and participated at Truck or Treat. I got my squats in that day, picking up all the stuff. So it, you know, it definitely was, it was still fun, you know, but yeah, two birds, one stone there. I attended conferences at North Park, which was a great night, always is, getting to see everybody come in. They have this like family tree there that they've built, and all the teachers, well, most of the teachers have their grades, put like their leaves on it with certain words or their names and things. And so we took pictures in front of the tree. It was a lot of fun. They have coats there for kids if they need it. So yeah, it was a fun night. I also attended the School Law Seminar. I attended the Veterans Day Celebration at Houston Park this past Saturday where Anita sang the National Anthem course because she has to, right? And then I also attended the Subcommittee Meeting for Community Engagement before this meeting. And I'm sure I left something out, but there you have it. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Laura?
I'm not quite as busy. So since the last meeting, I attended the 9/16 monthly meeting, the law conference also with, and that was very interesting. It was one of those, I was like, I always wanted more after every presentation. It was like, here's a ton of information. Okay, next, you know? So there's so much to learn. I really hope that we have more opportunities in the future, especially about some of the more trickier subjects and how we navigate those to do the best for our students and make sure that we're following the rules that are sometimes very complex and contradictory. But we do our best and rely on the individuals here to give us good advice. So that's what I kind of basically learned is if in doubt, ask and get all that information. Yeah, I really did enjoy the conference, but it wasn't long enough, although it was a super beautiful day, so it was nice getting out a little bit early, just saying. Let me see, I think that's pretty much it for me. Yeah.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thanks. Well, it has been a busy couple of weeks. And I've participated in many of the activities that have been talked about around the table, so I'll just mention those briefly, and then I'll try to focus on a couple of things that maybe are a little bit different. So I was able to attend the foundation dinner, and it was really nice to, it was really nice to talk to folks that are supporters of our district and our community and alumni, and to also hear from previous recipients of the scholarships in our district. I too was able to participate in Truck or Treat and help with the games. And I want to thank Carissa Orin for identifying some games that would be really popular. And they were. So we had three separate games, and I think those were a hit maybe for next year. And then I was also able to attend the National Honor Society induction ceremony of the high school. And that was a really fantastic event, seeing the hard work of our students that are participating in academics and service there. I really enjoyed the senior NHS students introducing the newly inducted juniors. That was just a really cool way to see the connections between students. And then I also had the opportunity to work with several of our NHS students last week when they came to volunteer at Highland Elementary where we had conferences going on, two nights in a row there, along with a book fair and a bake sale, and doing some prep work for an event that I may have mentioned here, I'm not sure, that's happening this Friday for our Turkey Bingo event. So it was great to be able to-
This Friday?
This Friday, November 15.
Oh, I thought it was Thursday.
So it was great to have the opportunity to get to know a few of the students a little bit better after that. And then I attended with my family the Dia de los Muertos event at the high school. And that was such a well-organized event and a very, very diverse in terms of activities, right? So focusing on art, focusing on music, and on dance, and sharing a meal with the community. So I was really appreciative to be able to participate in that and that partnership with the Hazer Center. And then I also attended the School Law Conference on Friday. I appreciated that they offered the ability to attend virtually. I think it allowed me to attend on a day where I otherwise would not have been able to go in person. So that was really, really helpful. And then I also attended the Policy Subcommittee Meeting prior to this board meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. I will give my report. I also attended the Truck or Treat. I had a really great time with all of you, as well as our team, and getting to see all the students all dressed up. So that was fun, all community members. I was not able to attend the Robotics Meet, but I did go and help set up for the Robotics Meet. So I spent some time over at Columbia Academy helping them get all set up and prepped for the meet. So that was fun to see the students were really excited to get to host their meet, so we were all working together. I did attend the scholarship banquet, and always a great time. I agree with member Maderas that just getting an opportunity to hear about our community and our distinguished alumni and to see our students come back after many years and talk about the difference that the scholarship made for them. And it's, you know, we can no longer have a scholarship banquet without Principal Nguyen doing some auctions. So each year you get better, better, but although, I don't know, I don't think we can top the first year because it was so surprising, I think, with that. But really a great, a great time for a very good cause. I had conversation with Vice Chair Granland and Superintendent Stenbik. I also attended the Subcommittee on Policy and the chair meeting today as well. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, and Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you. We are now in quarter two of the school year, believe it or not, and we are off to a very busy start. Since our last meeting, the Class Size Committee met, which is a joint meeting with local 710 members and administration. We meet quarterly to discuss class sizes and collaboratively come up with solutions. I really appreciated hearing from the teachers and principals at our quarter one meeting. I was invited to speak to our Intro to Education class, and this is a course, a college course offered right here at Columbia Heights High School for students, which enables them to explore a career in education. I participated in the National Honor Society induction ceremony, also at the high school, which, during which 54 students were inducted, as previously mentioned. I participated in the Minnesota Association of School Administrators Annual Meeting as one of the two Region Nine representatives. I enjoyed the law conference with the rest of the board members and team that were there, virtually or not. And I have to say, I'm really looking forward to Turkey Bingo this Friday. I will see you all there. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have to make, I did get a Facebook memory that popped up that I believe it was 12 years ago that was the first Turkey Bingo. So I took a screenshot so I could show it to you. Next, we'll continue. Thank you all. Thank you, Superintendent Stenbik. Next, to our new suspended and deleted courses for 2025 and 2026. And we have Director Tuckrell and Principal Nguyen.
And-
And Coordinator-
Emily Gartner.
Emily Gartner, which is not-
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you our proposals for new courses for the 25-26 school year. Strange to think already about 25-26, right? And we just started quarter two. And I'm here tonight with Principal Nguyen and Coordinator Gartner and a couple of her little ones in the back watching what she does. So our mission at Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our presentation tonight covers many of the core values, including community, excellence, collaboration, courage, and innovation, as we think about the hard work that our teachers and staff put into thinking about these new courses. Our Columbia Heights core values are aligned with the Board of Education Equity Statement. And we're here this evening as an informational item, and we'll be returning on the 26, recommending approval of the new courses and the consent agenda. We currently do not have any new recommendations to add new, deleted, suspended courses for the elementary school. As we are implementing the Read Act, there's been a lot of change and things happening, so we're going along with that one. And as we think about Columbia Academy, at this time, we have no additional recommendations to add new or delete or suspend any courses. And with them, to pass it to Coordinator Gartner to share about the high school recommendations.
We do have some recommendations for Columbia Heights High School. And good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. So last year, we came and presented to you that our ELA team was working with the Regional Centers of Excellence, or RCE, to look at standard alignment in grades 11 and 12, and then also look at their courses. So really wanting to provide more equitable opportunities for students and explore our new courses that would really meet students' diverse needs and interests. So they've been doing that work with RCE, they are continuing that work with RCE, and they've really shared how impactful that work has been and how it has led them to think about their courses and how the standards can be fulfilled in new ways. So the vision that we're bringing to you tonight is that the ELA team would like to create a suite of 11th and 12th grade ELA courses that would provide students with engaging, standards-aligned content, and that students would then be able to select from those courses in their 11th and 12th grade years, courses that the students feel best aligned with their interests and their future goals while still fulfilling requirements. The statement from the ELA department is that they aim to foster a love of reading and writing, develop critical thinking skills, and empower students to become confident, self-directed learners ready to take on the challenges of the 21st century. So the courses that that team has been working on developing are listed here. So Media Literacy, Environmental Literacy in English Language Arts, Everything's an Argument in English Language Arts, Multicultural Literature in English Language Arts, Exploring Identity Through Literature and Language, Exploring Dystopian Fiction, Film as Literature in English Language Arts, and Sports in Literature in English Language Arts. And Principal Nguyen is going to share more about these proposed courses.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the school board, and Superintendent Stenbik. So they've put a lot of thought into these courses, and I'm just going to read the descriptors to you. Media Literacy, by the end of the course, students will develop a critical lens through to which, to view the media landscape, equipping them with skills needed to navigate and engage the world around them, thoughtfully and responsibly. This is like four font here, just so you know, I mean, I am- Yeah, I know. But we had these prepped, right? Exploring Identity Through Literature and Language, Students Will Embark on Thought Provoking Journey Into Multifaceted Realms of Identity Through the Exploration of Literature and Language. Environmental Literacy in English Language Arts, Where Students Will Explore the Intricate Relationships Between Humanity, Nature, and the Written Word, Developing Critical Thinking Skills. Exploring Dystopian Fiction, This Course Designed to Engage Students in an Exploration of Dystopian Fiction Through a Variety of Novels and Short Stories, Films, and Other Multimedia Resources. Everything's an Argument in English Language Arts, This Course Focuses on the Art of Argumentation and Rhetoric, Equipping Students With the Skills to Construct Compelling and Well-Reasoned Arguments. Film as Literature in English Language Arts, Students Will Explore the Rich Interplay Between Film and Literature. Multicultural Literature in English Language Arts, This Course Will Cover Both Historical and Contemporary Context, Allowing Students to Understand the Complexities of the Displacement and the Socio-Political Factors That Contribute to it From a Diverse Spectrum of Perspectives. And finally, Sports in Literature in Language Arts, This Course Will Examine the Representation of Sports and Athletic Competition in Literature. So with that, based on the student data, courses and instruction will continue to change. Approved courses may not occur in certain years as its offerings are dependent on enrollment, staffing, and student needs/interests, and collaborative work with the Regional Centers of Excellence through the Bright Works to support alignment to the standard. At this time, we'll take any questions you may have.
Mary?
Thank you so much for this. This looks amazing. I'm really excited about these. Just a question. Everything's an argument in English language. I mean, are there going to be like a parent, like, class along with that when our kids come home? Like rhetorical, like learning how to have that, you know, this constructive arguments, like, are we going to get an ace? I'm just kidding. That's a joke. No, but I'm super excited about these offerings, and I really, I'm kind of jealous. Like, I want to audit, like, audit as in, like, go to the class and just like, I want to read these things, and I want to have these thought-provoking discussions. But honestly, the one that I'm really, really excited about is the media literacy. And I have this conversation at home with my own children, the idea of how do we know what information is, you know, what a reliable source is, and how do we do that? And I think the changing landscape of things is, you know, the way our media looks and the information that we get in it is changing so rapidly that I think it's incredibly important, and I think it's very thoughtful of us to have a class that's also talking about that with kids, so.
Thank you. Michelle?
These are awesome. I just, I guess I'm wondering what the implementation would look like. And like, so choosing these courses, I mean, it seems like a lot of them. So like, will all of them be available, or will you go by what people sign up for and just do those? Like, how does that work?
Great question. We just had this conversation with the ELA department two weeks ago. I think we sat in, and Principal Nguyen and I have had the conversation that we can't offer all of them in this first year, given it will take time to build the courses and to get the resources. So talking with the department, they're going to be offering a core group of them and surveying the students to see where they're at, and that was a conversation with Principal Nguyen was, it's very different than currently with English 11 and English 12, where you're going to say, teacher A is teaching this, teacher B is teaching this. We might have to change it up, and we all might be teaching. It's an argument, right? And be ready for that. And having that conversation with them, they were excited. They said, we can collaborate. We want to be able to teach all the courses. And so they were excited. They could be working together to create them and to be able to support each other with them. So it will depend on the students and what they, their interests are, and the numbers, and the planning of it.
And there'll be a little bit of a transition, right? So our current levels where we're at, and then introducing this, a couple of these, or one of the classes was an elective currently, and so some of the kids have already had this class. And so maybe not the year-long piece of it, but they have, they've had the class, and so there will be some transition. But offering student choice is one of the new standards that they're focusing on in Language Arts, and so provide an opportunity for our kids to actually pick what they have versus a generic English 11 and 12. And that takes nothing away from what we're doing now. It's just, you know, as we look more for student choice.
Well, it's great. I mean, like, I'm still at elementary level, right, with mine, but I'm always learning like how to make, you know, reading and writing fun, and I feel like you guys are doing that, you know, at that level. It's great.
I was just, I was just thinking here that the interest here is the students are going to want to participate and being able to come up with, I mean, learning shouldn't be routine, you know, it should be exploratory. So when I think that that's, that's what I'm seeing here is, is we're trying some different things because the important thing at the end of the day is that they learn the material, and it doesn't necessarily, the, how they learn it is not as important as the fact that they actually learn it. And they actually do look great, so we will be auditing these courses in the near future. So I'm actually fascinated with the dystopian one.
Yep.
That's, yeah, I kind of like the dystopian stuff, so, so, thank you.
And I think a lot of credit goes to our Language Arts Department. They've had this vision. This was well in play before this really came out as far as working with RCE Center. So they, they have had this vision, and then trying to coordinate this and what this would, how this would come alive is really what's been pushed this last year. So, you know, all credit to them taking a chance and caring about what kids think about this and trying to get them more engaged. That's, that's the leadership of that department, for sure.
You're creating hungry learners.
That's the goal.
You know, and, I mean, and, you know, getting a thirst for it, so, you know, making this more accessible. I mean, anybody can, you know, grab a book off the shelf and read it, but is it engaging? Does it, is it relevant? And I think you're doing both engaging and relevant, and plus giving the kids choices. They feel like they have control. I mean, I think it's a wonder, I think this is amazing. So, thank you.
No questions?
Well, anytime you come up with something new, it's like, oh, we're going to do another English course, you know, so, super exciting.
I just wanted to echo the comments of my fellow board members about this model and being able to deliver academic standards within themes that are engaging for students. I think that's really exciting. I also think there's a very clear connection between the direction of these courses and our new strategic plan as a district, especially when we're looking at academic learning within the theme of all succeed, ensuring students that have a variety of opportunities to explore and to, to grow academically. So I'm appreciative of that. And then I just, maybe this is a member request. I think since we're talking about courses that we're going to be able to offer, but not necessarily every year, I do think it's really helpful for us as a board to know year to year what courses are being offered at both, well, at all of our schools, but in particular, our secondary schools at CA and at the high school. And I don't know what the best time of year is to provide us with that information, but I do think that would be helpful year to year to be able to know what offerings are out there and students are enrolling and participating in year to year. So that's my request.
Two things. One is thank you for all your comments, and I will be the conduit and let our Language Arts Department receive this, this feedback as well, okay? Because really, they're the ones doing all the work. We're just presenting what they're doing. And secondly, you know, how we run courses, we have course offerings, course, a course description guide, and then we have kids sign up, and sometimes that dictates how many sections we run or whatever. So what we can do as far as the follow-up is when we go to register students, we can provide a copy of the course description guide of the courses that are offered. And then some of that magic afterward- And then some of that magic afterwards doesn't come out until August. Ideally, we'd get that done before we come back, but it, it could be, you know, midsummer for what classes are actually going to run for our master schedule, so.
And I think whatever's most convenient, I think just once a year, us knowing, oh, this is what's running would be helpful.
Our student information system, we could pull a report.
Thank you.
I, you know, I know, I always try to say like, let's not all talk about the same thing and, but I'm going to. It's my prerogative right now.
And it starts.
And it starts. I, I, I just want to continue to, to comment and I hope that you do share this with your team. Superintendent Stenvik and I were talking a little bit about this in one of the comments. I was like, oh, my kids are gone. I, I had kids that loved English eleven and English twelve, but I just can't imagine how much more they would have loved to be able to select a course that was based on their, on their interests and, you know, kind of some of their passion projects. And I see all of my kids being able to find something specific. My three very different kids would all find something within this course selection that would appeal to them. So just a great job of listening to the students, really which is what we wanted, is to elevate student voice, to respond to that. It shows the kids that their voice does matter and that it provides some ownership in their education. And thankful, I'm thankful to the staff who are willing to do this, stepping out of the box and trying something new. So thank you to, to all of you and to them as well. Any other questions or comments? All right, great. Thank you all. Next, we'll move on to our action items. We have one action item tonight, which is to canvas the returns of the school district's school board election resolution. We've got our election clerk, Stephanie Alvarez.
Good evening, school board members, Chair Mueller and Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight to canvas the returns of the school district's school board elections. Am I reading this resolution?
I'll read it. Okay.
You have a resolution to be read.
Yep, great, thank you. So we do have the resolution to canvas the school board election results. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District thirteen, the state of Minnesota, that has hereby found, determined, and declared that the annual election of the voters of the district held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, was in all respects duly and legally called and held, and, and held, and at said election, a total of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen electors of the district voted on the question of electing three directors to the Board of Education, each for a four-year term, of which four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four voted for Mary Granland, four thousand, two hundred and three voted for Karina Smith, four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five voted for Michelle Petway, four thousand, fifty voted for Adam Davis, three thousand, five hundred and fifty voted for Sheri Exstrand. There were one hundred and twenty-seven write-in ballots. Mary Granland, Michelle Petway, and Karina Smith, having received the majority of such votes, are hereby declared election, elected. Can I please get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Laura, and a second.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Mary.
I just want to take a second and say thank you very much to everybody who came out. This was, you know, it was really wonderful to have this experience. Spent a lot of time talking to people in our neighborhood and in addition to all of the things that I already do in our district. And, you know, we were joking at our house the other day and my oldest son said, so there's no more, there's no more elections, like, there's no more, what do we do? Because we've spent, you know, the last eight months of our lives doing these things, so. But again, I'm, I am eternally grateful to our community for trusting me and us with their, to hear their voice on the board and to be a part of that. And I'm incredibly thankful to be in a community that trusts women to lead, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Any other comments? Michelle.
Yeah, I want to say thank you as well for all the support and continued boosts when I need them. I have been campaigning for a little more than eight months. And have been on this journey before. And so it feels nice this time to be able to say, I'll get to have a role that lasts, you know, longer and I'll get to keep doing the good work we're doing. I feel like our board and our school district is in a really great place and we're moving in a really great momentum forward. And I just want to continue to be a part of that. You weren't getting rid of me anyway. I would have found some way to still be a part of this because I just know so much now. I've learned so much. And I too would have been a part of a lot of the events that I attend and the, the activities that, that we provide and do. So, yeah, I'm excited that I get to be here because people have asked me to and not just because I'm pushing myself on you guys. But thank you guys so much. Thank everybody. This was, this was great to be able to experience.
Thank you. Laura?
I just want to make a, a quick comment. Congratulations, both of you. I know that you've got a real passion and it was really wonderful to see so many engaged and putting themselves out there. Being a candidate and putting yourself out there is very difficult. It's, it's certainly, it's, it shows up in, in the results as to what you put into it. And, and to have so many people involved in putting themselves out there and, you know, and, and talking about, especially talking about our district, I think that's a wonderful thing, you know, to be, that people care enough to run. So, you know, congratulations to those that won. And, and thank you very much to those who, who participated and made this all, this American, you know, kind of experience possible. And we couldn't do it without everybody.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I too just want to say congratulations to the two of you and to Karina. I am confident that this board will be able to continue the good work that it has been doing. Stop, Laura. And I'm glad to have been a part of it and I'm glad to be able to watch the, the, the six new, six board members, all of you, move forward and continue moving us in the, in the great direction. I do want to thank Adam and Sheri for caring enough about student education to do the work, to put themselves out there. And thank you to Stephanie Alvarez as our election clerk. There's a lot of work that goes on to run a school board, a school board election. And thank you, Stephanie, for doing the hard work there, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Since this is a resolution, Michelle, will you do the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Granland?
Aye.
Petway, aye. Palmer?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Hool? Mueller?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you all. Next, we'll move on to board topics. Jessica, does anybody have any board topics?
Turkey Bingo and Silent Auction Event at Highland on Friday. Five-thirty, doors open. First game is at six o'clock. We have grocery gift cards for the bingo winners and a cash prize for the final round. We'll be selling pizza and other concessions, so you can come have dinner there as well. And we have about sixty to seventy donations from the local community for our silent auction, so.
Yes.
Be there if you can.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Any other board comments?
There's a robotics meet on Thursday before, so if you are looking for things to do at the end of this week, you can join us at CA. We, so people will start showing up around four and we anticipate that there will be, the meets will start at around five, so everybody is welcome. It is free. Please come and celebrate what our students are doing and learning through that, through the robotics team. So hopefully we'll see you there.
Thank you. Any other board topics?
What time is, sorry, what time is the robotics?
Oh, they'll start the meets around five.
Laura?
Lasagna next board meeting. Lasagna next board meeting, that's all right?
All right. Thank you, Laura. Laura will be providing lasagna for the work session. Thank you. Any other board topics?
And to anybody who comes to the work session.
Come hungry. Laura makes a great lasagna.
I make a big lasagna.
It was huge.
I don't want to take half of it home, so.
All right, anything else? All right, then we'll adjourn our meeting at six.